I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Could you please join me in the pledge?
Allegiance, we defy. The United States of America, history, public, which stands. One nation, under God, in this world, liberty, justice for all.
Okay. Look at this crowd here tonight. Under citizens' comments.
Yeah, Mark Knopf, Warfield Street. I'd like to thank the board for the moment of silence he gave to my dad. And in the middle school, inside and outside, with the baseball and, I don't know if you have a football stadium or anything, but they have a section available for the vision appeared, like in the front, like fifteen spots. It's also in, inside the gym, too. Do you know if the athletic department's working on the Auburn High Sees football team to have a Thanksgiving Day game? I missed that. That was a, doesn't seem like Thanksgiving without having, going to a Auburn football game Thanksgiving.
Sure. So, in terms of the seating, I know we are in the process right now at looking at stadium seating for outside as well as inside has been selected. Everything meets all ADA requirements, but we've got a meeting next week, so I can certainly confirm that for you.
Okay, I'll be there anyways.
Okay. In terms of the football, that was actually a two-year agreement that we had when we lost Oxford as our opponent for Thanksgiving. So, there are efforts underway to try and secure another team, but we don't have anything confirmed yet. So, we do hope to announce that soon.
Yeah. That was at the last Oxford Auburn game.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. How about, are they gonna be doing, even at the high school stadium, does anyone have like the outline to give a section for the vision appeared?
Um, I'd have to actually check.
Through Joe Fahey, maybe?
Sure, through either Mr. Fahey or our athletic director, we can certainly look into that.
Doesn't have to be big, but just enough so that, you know, it's front row, you're not, it's just a lot easier.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Page? Yes? Mark, I just wanted to say that I was a very good friend of your father's and worked with him quite a bit. He had done so much for this town and the churches and the seniors of this town. He was an unbelievable person. He always gave and gave and gave. He never asked for anything back. He was gonna be highly missed.
Oh, yeah.
And I just wanted to recognize that while you're here.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. Do we have any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, we will move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of special recognitions this evening, which is very exciting, and that was probably one of the best pledges of allegiance that we've had in a long time with all of you helping from the audience.
That was excellent.
Very nice. So, the first item I wanted to make you aware of is, Mrs. Lopez is here with a team of fine young men who represented Julia Bancroft and the Auburn Public Schools extremely well, having taken first place. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Lopez, who will introduce us to the team from JB and fill us in on the great news.
Absolutely. I'm here first. Thank you for having us this evening. Here to ask your permission to take this team of robotics. They competed in a VEX IQ challenge on March 8th at Quinn Sigerman Community College. They're a team of fourth grade students, there's six of them, they're the diamond crystals. They did a fantastic job and they won an overall award called the Excellence Award, which means they placed in many of the categories that they had to compete in during the course of the day. They did a fantastic and outstanding job. I'll let them answer any of those questions, but I'm here to ask permission to take them to what they were invited to as a result, which was the World Championship in Louisville, Kentucky. So, they will be competing against their peers in elementary school from teams around the globe in Louisville, Kentucky on April 15th through the 18th. So, I'm here to request that field trip. Before you give your answer, I think you should hear from the boys, and they have lots to explain or tell you if you'd like to hear anything further. So, boys, come on up. I have my five team members here, hopefully the sixth will come. Come on over, or the microphone is over here. So, you can introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Matthew Hubbell.
I'm Ralph Kapadia.
I'm Nathan Mabough.
I'm Neil Grovenor.
And I'm Anthony Lloyd.
Did you wanna hear, they had today dictated a few things about the parts of the competition, but I didn't know if, rather than that, if you'd like them to speak to questions, or if you'd like them to tell you a little bit about what they had to do. So, it's really your preference, what would you like?
Mr. Page? I'd like to have him explain it to us, if they don't mind.
Sure, not at all. Neil, why don't you start?
So, um, first of all, we, um, we had gone in this cut to build a robot and a booklet that we would read the instructions on, it was just pictures. And, um, so we built our robot by looking at pictures and how it showed us what pieces to put on. They kind of looked like Legos. And how we, um, when we finished building it, we would start testing it by, um, using the course that would be in the challenge, and then we would test our robot and see how many points we would score. And how you would score points is by either pushing cla, um, blocks into the scoring zone, or either grabbing the blocks with, um, this claw that's attached on the robot that'd pick up blocks and stack them on their matching color. And, so, yeah, we would do this, we'd see how many points it scored, we'd go back and fix it, and we would also, like, when we'd test it once and see if it's kinda fine, we'd start modifying the robot by, like, adding things to it. So, we added a plow, so then we could push blocks into the scoring zone, and if we, pretty much if we didn't, um, build the plow and we just used the back to push blocks on, the blocks might slide to the side and, like, just move away, and we wouldn't be able to score any points.
Thanks, Neil.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Neil. This is Peyton Reyno, and you can either, excuse me, I'm sorry, Peyton Skapatsky, sorry. Peyton Skapatsky, and you can explain to the school committee either the component that we talked about, or you can, you can speak to that part and read whatever you want.
After we built the robot, we modified it and we started working on autonomous program, which is when we, we can't have a controller and there's no drivers. So, and we measured how far we wanted to, like, move forward in inches, so we, like, placed the robot down, so if we wanted to move forward twelve inches, we would click and drag a block that said "move forward," and then we were, and then we would change the measurement to twelve in inches. And if we wanted to turn, like, turn left forty-five degrees, we would click and drag a block over, and then it would, and then it would say "turn right forty-five degrees." Yeah, and we would download it to the robot's brain, where it's, where all of its, like, programs and memory is, and then we could hit, like, start, and then it would do the things we put it, put on the autonomous program.
Excellent, Peyton. Let me see who's next. Ralph, do you wanna explain the journal?
We had to have a journal, and we had to put everything that we did in the journal. If we missed something, we could be disqualified, and we'd be disqualified because all the modifications that we did, so all the changes had to be in the booklet. If they weren't in the booklet, um, the judges could disqualify us for their reason. And we also wrote about the STEM project that Anthony's gonna present soon, so we put all of our sources in there. We also put, um, it's a engineering journal, and in the engineering journal, we also put all of our ideas and everything else that we thought of that would be useful.
Anthony? Excellent. Anthony?
Okay.
You can either read or speak off the cuff, you know everything about it.
Hi, I'm Anthony. Our STEM presentation was originally about electrical engineering, and if you're wondering, STEM is science, technology, engineering, and math. Then, we thought about conserving energy, or saving it. Eventually, we found a lot of information about wind turbines. A wind turbine works the opposite of a fan. A fan uses electricity to generate wind. A wind turbine uses wind to generate electricity. We based our STEM presentation on the research we did about wind turbines. At first, we did not have enough information, so we did more research, we made a PowerPoint presentation. Each of us had something to say. Matthew introduced us and our topic. Neil told the judges about the inside of the, of a wind turbine. Peyton explained how engineers improved on the blades of wind turbines and about the aerodynamics of the blades. Nathan described the problems, described the problems that wind turbines face. Ralph revealed why wind turbines were a better source of energy than oil or gas. I finished with a description of how wind turbines have changed over time. We wrapped up our presentation by showing the judges our sources.
Thanks, Anthony. Nathan, do you wanna explain the rules of the game?
Uh, yes. The rules of the game was you have sixty seconds, and there are thirty-six blocks on one end of the course, and you have to push as many blocks to the other side of the course in a minute. And, um, and if you pushed all the blocks, if you had enough time, you could, like, stack more blocks, which would multiply your, um, score by how many blocks you stacked and how many blocks there was. Like, if you stacked one block, it would be, like, two times one, which would be two points for stacking that one block.
Do you wanna add anything else about the driving piece?
Uh, nope.
Okay. They prepared all this today, just so you know. They kinda dictated things, and then we went over a few things, so, but they're, they're good about this.
When you are pushing the box, you have sixty seconds, and every thirty seconds, well, there's a thirty-five, um, second time limit, and if you don't hand your controller off to the partner, um, like, you could get, like, disqualified.
Can you explain how you worked with another team?
And, like, you work with another team, and you try not to get in their way. So, like, one, one team could be stacking the whole time, and another team could be pushing the whole time. Yeah.
Thanks. Basically, the high-rise challenge, it works a lot on collaboration, so the boys had to work with teams from all over southern New England, and they didn't know who they were teamed with until that morning, so oftentimes, they had to quickly strategize, "All right, well, we're doing this, you do this." And as the competition went further throughout the day, they got to know each other a little bit, so that was also a nice piece that they were able to do. And the autonomous programming that they didn't spoke to, they were able to accomplish a great deal and score a lot of points by programming the robot without any direction, just hitting start and having the robot do exactly what they wanted to, based on the formulas that they inputted into the program, under the direction of their coach, Christine Lloyd. Are there any other questions, or?
Before we open it up to comments, I'd like to get them there first, well-deserved round of applause. That one was just for your presentation tonight, and then we'll give you a little more at the end for actually winning the contest and moving on. How's that? Couple rounds of applause. All right. Do we have any comments?
I have a question. Is this an after-school program?
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
It was. We started, the boys started, you can come a little bit closer to the microphone if they wanna speak to you. The after-school program had begun in January, went for several weeks, they met on Thursday afternoons. There were twenty-two students in attendance, and they broke down into different teams, and each of the teams had their own programming, their own STEM research project, their own ability to build a robot, and then from that, they all went to the competition. And they did excellent, and these boys did outstanding.
So, this is all volunteer basis, and, yeah, just, it's incredible.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, great job, and you guys did a fantastic job at public speaking. You're gonna be doing it for the rest of your life, so great job. I'm very proud to have you guys in our town, and good luck. So excited for you guys.
And I have a question. When you go to Kentucky, do you do the same thing all over again, or is it a whole new challenge?
Uh, it's the same, uh, challenge, high-rise.
Yeah?
But we might be working with different teams.
Sure.
And they might have different pieces of English. And languages, we're gonna have to learn different languages.
Oh, my goodness.
Because it's the world championship.
Oh, cool.
We're gonna have to learn languages. I don't know how we're gonna learn languages.
You're gonna be very busy.
Well, you know, I've, I've traveled a bit since I retired from teaching in Auburn, and I have found that most of the other countries, their students learn English. So, you probably will be all right.
Okay.
Because I could name you fifteen countries right now, and in every one, they spoke beautiful English, especially the students, 'cause they teach it in school, starting very young. So, you'll probably be just fine, and I wish you lots of luck.
I would like to say congratulations, and I think the language will come easy after what you've already done. So, be proud of yourselves, keep up doing the good work that you're doing, and thanks for making Auburn look good.
Yeah.
You all, great job, great job. I learned more from you people tonight than I knew anything about it in the last, by ten minutes, and I wanna thank you and keep it up, and I will be voting for you to go on the trip.
I would just say that we've been, as a committee and as a town, we've been impressed and excited ever since we got the news, the day that you guys won. And we know how much work it takes to get something like this accomplished, to go to a contest like that, something that, a contest that you've never been to, all the work that you've done together with your teachers, you make us proud, you make the town proud, you make the entire community proud, and us as a school committee proud. So, yes, we'll support you in this endeavor, and we're as excited as you are about the trip that you're about to go on. And I know that you guys will continue to work hard as you've been doing to get to this point, right? Absolutely. Well, I will be supporting your trip as well, and as I said, very excited about it. So, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Absolutely.
Any questions? I just have a couple questions about logistics.
Certainly.
Just for, for those watching at home and who may take part in a trip like this in the future, who will be going along with the students?
A parent will be accompanying each one of the children on this trip.
Okay.
Actually, the parents are here in present. Each one of them will be traveling with their sons and with them the entire time.
And anyone from the district?
I'm hoping to go and support them throughout the time that they're there, for sure.
That would be excellent.
I believe it's April school vacation, right?
It abuts April school vacation, yes.
Yes.
Well, if you can't make it, maybe I can go.
You got a meeting that week.
And I would just like to say that, I'd like to thank the, the people at home, fellow community members, people that were involved within sports, everyone who pitched in to make this trip happen, because it didn't take long. You guys set a goal as far as how much money it would take to get to Kentucky, and I believe it happened pretty quick.
It was amazing.
Four days, was it?
A great parent group put that together, and in two days, through the generosity of businesses and personal donations, we were able to do that. When I had spoken with the parents and in speaking with the students, it was definitely an all or nothing. We competed as a team, and they needed to stay as a team, and to be able to go to Kentucky that way, and the parents stepped out to the plate and put that together, and through the real great generosity of this community, we were able to send them.
It really does, it speaks to the type of community that we have here, and it's only getting stronger by the looks of this. So, again, proud, proud to be, proud to be a member of this community, and proud to have you guys representing us in Kentucky.
Through the chair. Also, kudos to Christine Lloyd, I see her way back there hiding. She really spearheaded that, the whole fundraising aspect, and she, didn't she run the?
She was the coach as well.
The coach, yes.
Christine? Stand and come on camera. It was her mathematical, science, technological expertise that brought all of the students this great after-school program, and her time as well.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Good luck.
If I could just say something, good luck to all of you. You did a terrific job, as all the committee members said, really making Auburn proud, and this has been quite a year for Auburn, and certainly you boys going down to the World Championship makes us all very excited. And thanks to the parents, and certainly Mrs. Lloyd, Mrs. Lopez for supporting this, and I'm sure that it will be continuing at Swanson Road Intermountain School next year, right?
We hope so.
Absolutely.
They're already talking about it, so.
Oh, good.
I think we need to get creative.
That's good.
Excellent. Good luck, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Would you like, guys, if you come around here and say hello to us and shake our hands on your way out?
Oh, you're welcome. Great job. Great job. Congratulations. Great job.
Yes, that's the one.
Great job.
Good luck. Don't worry about the languages, they're English. Good luck. That's the one. I can't wait to hear all about it. Good luck. Good job. Nice to meet you. Good job, good luck.
You got good, yeah. I think they wanna stay. No, that's quite all right. No, no, no. So, this is me, if you want, just right there.
That's so cute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, she's not here this evening, but the next time she returns, we can certainly congratulate her. Taylor Folkrod, one of our school committee representatives, is the recipient of the Daughters of the American Revolution Award. This is an award given annually, and it speaks to qualities of dependability, service, patriotism, and leadership. Taylor does a tremendous job, I don't know if you realize this, but she is the lead in Legally Blonde upcoming as well, so she also is part of the Rocket Band, she is multi-talented, so congratulations to her. Not an easy act to follow, but I am very excited to share with you that after a long and very thorough process, I'm very pleased to recommend to you Rosemary Reedy. She is currently a reading specialist at the Bryn Mawr School. Rosemary applied for and after a two-tiered process, was selected as a unanimous candidate to serve as our next Director of Pupil Services. Rosemary has truly shined as a reading specialist, and I have every confidence that she will do the same in this new role, and we look forward to her hopefully assuming it and staying for a very long time in the Auburn Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel. Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to everyone, to officially meet you this evening, and I would also just like to add that I am very excited to be joining Dr. Brunel in such a dynamic leadership team in the Auburn Public Schools, so I'm really excited, and thank you.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion to recommend.
Do us the appointment.
I'll make that motion, make a motion to endorse the appointment of Rosemary Reedy as the Director of Pupil Services for Auburn Public Schools effective July 1st.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Page. Any discussion, comments, questions?
Good luck.
Thank you. Nice to see you again.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, nice to meet you.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Thanks. Did they take the vote? No, you just need to take the vote. Give a motion, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can't believe that motion was open.
Yeah, she's gonna be terrific.
Yeah, she's gonna be great.
I also wanted to let you know, I share this regularly, it's wonderful to recognize our students when they shine academically, athletically, musically, or otherwise. Also important as part of the athletic program is how our students represent us. We saw the young men tonight do a fine job in, in representing themselves, their school and the district. Mr. Davis, who's filling in for Mr. Garno, notified me that both the girls varsity soccer and the varsity basketball teams were recipients of the sportsmanship award. So, I think that it deserves recognition and credit, that they made it to the district playoffs, but also what that speaks to me is that they represented themselves in the school and district well, so I congratulate them on that.
Any comments? Excellent, great news.
And then, on a sadder note, would like to share with you and then ask for a moment of silence at the end, that Mr., in memory of Reverend Paul W. Lemire, who passed away on Saturday, March 14th, at the age of seventy-nine. Father Lemire was a chemistry teacher at Auburn High for twenty-three years, retiring in June of nineteen eighty-five. His wife, Mary, with whom he had five children, passed away in nineteen eighty-two. After his retirement from the Auburn school system, Paul was called into his second vocation and was ordained to the Holy Priesthood on June 3rd, nineteen eighty-nine, by Bishop Timothy Harrington. He was at one time the senior priest in residence in Auburn prior to his last residency of St. Anson Shrewsbury. Besides his wife, a son dead, David Red Lemire, predeceased him. So, if we could have a brief moment of silence in Reverend Lemire's memory.
Seeing no student representatives here, are we expecting any?
I believe not. I don't know why, though, yeah.
We will move right along. I'd seek approval of the minutes of March 4th.
Do I have a second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item, now that we have, you have approved the trip to Louisville, Kentucky, is the public hearing on the naming of the Auburn Middle School Field. So, in order to do so, you will need a motion to formally open the public hearing before discussion can be had, but do note that it has been duly advertised in the newspaper as well as on local cable.
I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the naming of the middle school field.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Do we have anyone? Yes, we do. A return guest.
Whoops, whoops, it is here. Mark Knopf, Warfield Street. I'd like to request that Warfield be named Bill Parquet, former athletic director at Auburn. And August of nineteen seventy-five, he was a lifesaver to me. I was delivering newspapers up on Packard Chalk Hill, and I'd done this many times before, but there was a breezeway with a mailbox, and I misjudged, and my arm went through a glass window, and there was no home in there, and I started walking home, 'cause I knew some shortcuts up on the hill, on Packard Chalk Hill, and he stopped me and took care of me, and I'm okay, alive, really. He was a lifesaver. That's back then when you had the old police wagons, the police station, yeah, yeah, police, the cruiser and the ambulance was one unit. Okay, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
That's quite the story, Mark. I'm glad he saved you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. No, but we would like to thank you for your comments tonight, and we're, I'm also glad that you survived that, they have delivering newspapers, and we will certainly take that into consideration. We've got a couple others that, that we'll be taking a look at. We've got a couple others that we'll be taking a look at as well as some of the backing, I guess, stories or history that go along with the others and yours.
Okay.
We appreciate your comments.
When are you going to make a final decision tonight? Or are you going to do a couple, you're going to deliberate in the name?
Hopefully this evening, SBC is looking for.
The sign needs to be put up, so we will try to make that happen tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we continue this public hearing and discuss the other names?
Yes. So if you'd like, I can share with you information. Other names that were brought forward were the Granger Field, the Randall Field, the Granger slash Randall Field, the Cary L. Granger Field. Two individuals or one individual and institution that notified us. The Masonic Lodge did notify us that they would respectfully request that a field be named the Cary L. Granger Field. What I shared with you also in the packet was information that Mr. Ethier shared with us in consideration of both the Granger and Randall names. So with your approval, I will just read aloud what he had shared. Cary L. Granger was a teacher at Gates Lane School in Worcester. She lived at Randallwood with the Randall family, which is the property, part of the property that we are on here. She was the executor of Randallwood, making sure the town got the land for Randall's school with ample space for the children to play. Randallwood's main crop was gladiola that were sold at the family's flower shop in Worcester. The Randall house still stands and is used by Crystal Caves. And he closes with, "Thank you for considering keeping her name alive." So those were the names that came before us, or before you, I should say.
Now, I'm a little confused. Is she connected to the Mr. Granger that we were talking about?
So there was a question asked about that and what Mr. Ethier indicated, he thought that there may be a family relationship. Not a sister, though.
Okay. No, it would be different generations.
Yeah. But he thought that there was a relation. He wasn't certain. He indicated perhaps a cousin, but it wasn't certain.
Okay, because George had thought something about, we had done, some Granger land had been donated to the site. But maybe it was the Cary Granger donating the Randall land?
That's what Mr. Ethier has cleared up now, yes. So actually, the town is my, our understanding that the town actually purchased this land for the sum of, I think, $2,000 from the Randall family. It seems, though, that then she, Cary Granger, was put in charge of the estate moving forward.
Now, we have two fields we can name?
We do. We have the large field on which the students will play and there's also a practice field as well.
Okay. And the large field's the ones going to have the sign that we.
Correct.
That's the.
Correct. That will have the sign. And then the smaller one, although I will say this morning at our construction meeting, I mentioned to the members there, in anticipation of a potential question, is could we, though, have a small, some sort of a recognition sign? So they were working up a price that would go before the SBC to at least have it noted, the name of the practice field as well.
Okay.
Any other comments? So did I at one point hear one of the submissions to be Randall Granger or was, those two were never put together?
There is of this.
There is one. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at this other paper. Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion, look open for suggestions here.
Well.
Before discussion.
I would like to see.
At this point, you can entertain motions.
Okay. So you need to close the public hearing before you entertain motions.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Now, do I have a motion or any comments, ideas?
So if we could just talk a little more.
Sure.
The land belonged to the Randall family. In Cary Granger, somehow, maybe she married into the family or something. But she was there at the house, so she got to be executor. So she was actually giving the Randall land to the school. Because it doesn't seem like it was her land. She was the executor, unless it's executive or was it, became her land.
So my understanding is that the town actually purchased the land from the Randall family, is that what you've got from Mrs. Gabry? And that at some point Cary Granger lived in their home and then wanted to be sure that the Randall children had ample space to play, the land out in the back here.
The Randall Field.
Right.
Does.
I'm just thinking, as everybody else is trying to think of which way to go with this, because there's so many good ones on this one. Is, I was thinking about the Granger Randall Field. Because it puts them both together and it doesn't single out one Granger, but because there's a couple that are involved that I think should be named on the field. So if we do it this way, we're doing them both instead of just singling one out. That's my opinion.
But then that leaves us with no name, perhaps, for the practice field.
Unless we want to entertain the citizens.
No, you still have.
We brought forth for the Parquette Field, really, because we really would think given three.
Or you can just go up to.
How about this? How about if. If I do receive a motion for the Granger Randall Field and that is accepted as the name. And then maybe we can look into a name for next week for the other field? Or are we looking at having the sign made? Is there a deadline on the second sign as well?
I would say through the chair that the time is of the essence that they need to name this. I don't know if you would be interested in a recommendation from me. I think it's important that the field, because it will be referenced that way by students and families in town. I'm just not sure if that's not an awful long name for a field. I wonder if, in recognition and certainly in due deference to Mr. Benal's recommendation and to the great deed that Mr. Parquette did for him, this property has long been known with the school here as Randall School. And even though there isn't Randall here any longer, if perhaps the synthetic turf field was named the Randall Field and the practice field was named the Granger Field, I think you're still recognizing the two names. And we could, you know, have a sign designed by Labor Pagano or their subcontractors. It still maintains the two names that have always been used for this property and the fields.
I think, I think I would be in support of that. I think both names will be represented fairly. And again, with taking no exception to the citizens' comments, I would say that without, without these people, we wouldn't have these fields. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be ours to, right now, be building on and having been played on all of these years that they've been open for use. Mr. Page?
I just want to clarify this again. You're saying one be the Granger Field and the other one Randall Field?
Yes. And whether, you know, I mean typically what would happen, or we could request this with the S through Labor Pagano, is that on the sign, you know, if it was going to be a wooden sign, there certainly could, you know, have a brief descriptor if it, for the Granger Field. If it was, you know, the Cary L. Granger, she was the, they actually had a field out here named after her. The Masonic Lodge named a field that they let the United Soccer use for years. And that was, that was the Cary Granger Field. And that's why it's their request to have one of the fields named to continue that, because that's what they had named it in her honor. You know, I think that generally names get shortened. We talked a lot about with the Swanson Road. So I think ultimately they would be known as the Randall Field and the Granger Field, I think, is what they would be named as. Referred to.
Through the chair, I do like the idea of actually putting a bit of a descriptor. Yeah, I'm sure a lot of folks who live in Auburn just don't know the history of it.
Right.
So I would try to go as fast as I can.
So can I make a motion to do that?
You can. Absolutely.
I'll make that motion. Which fields?
The larger synthetic field, only that this is known as Randall. I would call it the Randall Field and the practice field is the Granger Field. That's my recommendation.
Are we going to do Granger Field or are we going to do Cary L. Granger?
Yeah, just going to do it as a practice, not the, no, I think Granger, the Granger Field is better because it covers both of them. You know, it's not just singling one person.
Oh, you both were Granger families. Cary Granger and Mr. Granger.
Right. So you're just saying the Granger, the field, instead of saying just her.
Yeah.
This way, we're covering both of them in one name.
So you're just saying Randall Field for the main field and Granger Field for the practice field. And then that one Granger covers both Granger people.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. I'll make that motion to that effect.
Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Any comments? I'd just say that I like that idea as long as I've been in town and it's not nearly as long as some of you. It's been Randall Field and I do like the way it's identified. And I like the way that we've spoken of a plaque to signify exactly why it's called that and I think that'll work out great. And as far as the other name that we, was suggested in citizens' comments, possibly there's something else that we could do to honor Mr. Parquette.
He's still alive, too, so.
Oh, okay.
He's not, I know, that's a, I discussed it a lot with the superintendent.
Okay.
He's still, yeah.
Well.
Still on Packard Chalk Hill.
We're not, we're not rushing you, Mr. Parquette. But we will try to come up with a way to honor you. Any other comments?
No, I think that's very good and it'll work out.
Yes.
I think so, too. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
Thank you. The next item, the menu. We share this with you on an annual basis and it becomes increasingly, it's always been impressive, I think, and I hope that you see it the same. This includes all of the variety of options that are available to the teachers, if you recall, it's not only Auburn Public Schools, but also the Leicester Public Schools. And I offer sincere thanks and kudos to Dr. Loze for the work that she puts together, certainly her assistant helps, Mrs. Flynn. But it promises to be an outstanding day as it has been every year.
Can we give Mr. Benal a hand?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah. Yeah, I can some of those, too. Okay, thank you. You should give the elbow, Benal said.
There you go.
Any elbows? Double, take the elbow.
Elbow?
Go. Thank you.
The next item is the Future Ready Schools Pledge. This has actually come out from the United States Department of Education and really is very much in alignment with the strategic plan and the initiatives that we have underway in the district. By signing this and what it notes in here is that it, "To foster and lead a culture of digital learning within our schools, helping families and schools transition to high-speed connectivity, empowering educators through professional learning opportunities, accelerating progress toward universal access for all students to quality devices, and providing access to quality digital content, as well as offering digital tools to help students and families reach higher and mentoring other districts in helping them transition to digital learning." I think one of many things that we can be proud of in the district is our very forward thinking in terms of the one-to-one iPad initiative that will be expanded to grade six to 12. So it is my intention to sign on to this and it actually will reap some benefits being able to attend, get some free resources, but I wanted to make you aware of it and I think it's a great, a great indicator for Auburn.
It seems like we're already doing it, so.
We are. We are.
We might as well.
That's right. That's right.
Any other comments? Moving right along.
The public hearing is, will still be held on April 1st. But if you'll remember, I had shared with you that due to a printing error, it was actually noted in some recent publications, the March 24th special town meeting will still take place for Articles 1 through 4 and 9 and 11. Articles 5, 6, 7, and 8, though, will be moved to April 1st at 7:00. My intention would be, when I do a presentation, as I typically do for any of the town meetings, would be to go over and explain the need for each of these articles. It was explained in a notification sent to town meeting the second time with the adjusted time of our public hearing. But most notably, while all of the school department's articles are one of great importance, Articles 5 and 6 are the two that speak to the MSBA accelerated repair projects, which has the potential to save the town between $1.5 and $1.7 million, will not require any additional borrowing, will require some repurposing of some previously approved CIP funds noted in Articles 3 and 4. But assuming those are approved, I would encourage and respectfully request the town meeting approve 5 and 6 as well.
Any comments?
So we're going to attend the March 24th meeting and we're going to meet at 6:30.
Correct.
At that time.
Yes.
And then the, we're going to have an April 1st meeting because of the second town meeting?
Correct. And we always had a school committee meeting that night in our public hearings. So the public hearing's been moved to 7:45.
Okay, so we're coming, we're going to be at the high school for what time?
We have not set a meeting prior to the April 1st meeting. That could be something for discussion tonight.
Okay.
If you'd like to do that. Typically in the past, we've always had a meeting at 6:30 before town meeting in case there's any business to discuss. So I would recommend that we do that. The other piece that you could do is, since there will be some items on the school committee agenda, we could perhaps hold that even at 6 or 6:30 and get those done prior to town meeting and then do the public hearing and we could be finished the meeting, if that works.
Okay. I was confused about the, we were going to two meetings, but we are.
We are.
Okay.
We are.
Do you want a motion for the April 1st school committee meeting at 6:30?
Yes.
On that night and then we can, if there's business, we discuss it. If not, we're just recess until the end of the meeting in case we have to go back in.
Correct. Because there will, there are some items on the school, we'll keep it a light agenda. So whether we can start at 6 or 6:30, we should be able to get all of the non-public hearing items completed prior to town meeting at 7 and then our public hearing at 7:45.
So what do you want the time? You want it at 6 or 6:30?
Through the chair, that's up to the committee, whatever time would work. I'm not sure if 6 o'clock start time is feasible for people or not.
I can do it. Are we going to need all that time? I mean, are we going to sit there doing nothing?
I don't know. We don't know because it's.
It depends on the.
Yeah, it depends on the agenda.
We could probably, we could probably adjust the agenda either way.
Sure. We could. Absolutely.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
I can do either.
I could, I could make 6 o'clock.
Okay, so I'll make the motion for 6 o'clock.
Just to be safe, that way if we do run into some things that come up before the meeting, we'll have plenty of time to talk.
No.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I did include in your packet the original letter that was sent to the town meeting members inviting them as we always do the public hearing and then the follow-up one that was sent noting the different times. So I included those as FYIs for you. I also in here included for you an update. We have a district quarterly newsletter, actually, that will go home to our students' families tomorrow and you will all receive a copy of that. But just outlined for you the, I know that you are aware of it, but the tremendous amount of work that is going on behind the scenes. There's rarely a day that goes by that there is not some work that is done on making sure that we are going to be ready for and planning for the many transitions that are going to be taking place. In fact, it was a topic of discussion at our leadership team meeting earlier today. In addition to all of those, with the closure of JB and Mary D. that's likely to occur, there is a tribute video that has been created as a closure team. We actually viewed it last week at our meeting. We're making some additional tweaks. We had originally interviewed, as I shared with you last time, Mr. Clifford Granger. We had originally interviewed, as I shared with you last time, Mr. Clifford Granger. We added another woman who is just shy of 90, who had gone to the Julia Bancroft. So, she has been added into that. I need to go and do, update my voiceover to include for that. So, that will be one of the things that we'll be able to share with you on the first, although it's quite likely that that actually may even begin playing on the local cable prior to that. Our plan is to have it out on local cable. We do have T-shirts made. We actually have order forms that we hope to send home tomorrow, of T-shirts from both Julia Bancroft and Mary D., thanks to Bay Path. We have buttons that have magnets on them that can be put up on refrigerators, and beautiful note cards that they're creating, too, for sale. So, and we have letters being mailed to Auburn retirees who may, to let them know about the April 26th open house dates, as well as an opportunity, if they wanna buy any keepsakes. And it, thank you to Mrs. Harrington, as well as Mrs. Zademyak, the District One and Two PTOs are gonna help facilitate those order forms that come in. So, the prices are very, we're keeping the prices very inexpensive on these items, but I think we'll have a lot of people wanting these keepsakes for their schools.
Good stuff.
Just as an additional reminder, I did do a one-call this evening. The phones were ringing like crazy when you first may have come in, to remind everybody that the bus applications are due on April 1st, and any late application will be assessed a late fee of $50. Even if a family is uncertain as to whether or not they qualify for free or reduced lunch, or whether or not they'll be assessed the fee, everybody must fill out the application form.
Mr. Page? How do you feel it's going now, Mary Ellen, or can you tell?
I actually checked earlier this week, and we were just under 600 applications at the time. That was on Monday, so some have come in certainly since then, but we typically get 1,100 in a year. So, we were just over that 50%. We had quite a bit to go. So, it's two weeks from today. There are still two weeks left. But with this notification, it'll go home again tomorrow, so hopefully they will all come in. Typically, we get a huge rush of them towards the end. So, hopefully, that's the case.
Could you just repeat the protocol? Do they, can they get it online if they...
They can, so they can download it from the Auburn Public Schools website. It will go home with an email notification tomorrow, and it's probably gone home every two weeks since January or so.
It has.
We've sent home a hard copy with every family. It was actually mailed home to the high school and middle school students with either a progress report or a report card. They can call the school if they don't have one, and have one sent home, so... They can call here as well, certainly, too.
Call or show up here at West Street, fill out the application, and hand it in right then?
Right.
And along with the application, they have to hand in the money, right?
They do. They do have to hand in the $100.
There's pro, is there no way to charge it? They have to write a check?
They do. They would need to write a check or cash, and they would receive a receipt for it, unless somebody or money order, unless someone already qualifies for free reduced lunch, or if their home is outside of the perimeter, and they may not have to pay a fee, but the application has to be in.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, exactly.
Also, if someone lives far enough away, they just have the application.
If they're an elementary school, exactly.
Elementary, right.
Right, yep, exactly.
Through grade six?
Through grade six.
Through grade six. I'm sorry, through grade six, yes, yep.
Because a lot doesn't, it starts with seven, but you don't have to.
Correct, yes, yep.
Ms. Harrington?
Are they doing the transfer bus next year? Do you know?
We actually are waiting until we get, so if people have questions on that, I would encourage them to fill out the application and get that submitted, because that's the date of the reason we're collecting it early, is to actually set the routes and determine how many routes we're gonna need. The transfer bus, though, is something that people have requested, so we're certainly gonna make every effort to do that.
All right, so is there a place to check off transfer bus, or would you just write on there that you're only interested in the transfer bus?
If they're only interested in that, they should note that right on the form. Yes, yep.
I will do that.
Okay.
Joyce, did you hand yours in?
Of course.
Yeah, right, you were late last year.
Any other comments? Or questions that our names haven't?
Yeah, how we handed it in, he said, right, fill it out.
All right, moving right along.
We did receive a letter, a return letter, response from Senator Moore, and I share it with you here. This was in regards to the legislative action that was being encouraged by the Mass Association of School Superintendent, so I share that with you, and appreciate his response to it. The FY16 budget, just making you aware that we have no new information, so at this point, I think that we stay, or my recommendation would be that you stay with the budget that has currently been approved, the $23,488,154. That's the number that town meeting has been appraised of.
So, we need a motion, or you all set?
All set, yes, through the chair, all set. The next item is the School Building Committee, the issue regarding the vinyl fence. So, we did, there were a few questions that the committee had asked at the last meeting, one about the temperature, and whether there was any possibility of causing any damage to the vinyl fence due to the heat, as well as the plantings, and perhaps what some additional plantings might cost, should you opt to stay with the chain-link fence. At this morning's construction meeting, and actually last week as well, we had discussions about it. One issue to note is what they've realized in recalculating it, the $10,000, $10,300 that they had indicated was gonna be the cost to do a change, or to change from chain-link to six-foot vinyl, was actually incorrect. It should have been a little over $12,000 to make that change. So, that's one piece of information. What Mr. Moore from La Marpa Gano indicated today is, without knowing the temperature and how much of a fire that they do in there, they'd really need those calculations to determine. What he did indicate, though, is that where originally the tower, from what used to be the Little League Field, there was about 58 feet away. The tower now, to the closest plantings or chain-link fence, is about 30 feet, and the furthest point is about 38 feet. Certainly not scientific, but people sitting at the meeting last week felt that it should not be a concern in terms of melting. Based on that $12,000 figure, I did ask, what if more mature plantings were to be added, and they had done that, and added in a substantial number of them, and the approximate cost to do that was about $15,000. But again, it was substantial, substantial number of plants that they had added. So, I share that with you for your consideration. I know now that the weather is starting to warm slightly, and hopefully will continue to do so. They are hoping to have an answer, hopefully this evening, because they're gonna need to start planning for, or if not, certainly by April 1st, but the sooner the better, I think.
So, question. So, it's, if we went with chain-link and more plantings, the more plantings would be $15,000? Or we plantings the way they are, and then the vinyl would be $12,000?
Correct.
Instead of the chain-link?
So, there's actually three choices. You could simply leave the four-foot chain-link that's there with the plantings already designed. You could leave the four-foot chain-link fence and add in some additional plantings. $15,000 was the max, and you could recommend a lower number, if you wanted, up to a value, or the third option is to go with a vinyl fence.
Any comments?
$15,000 worth of plant seems excessive. I would recommend a lower amount, I think.
I would agree with that. What is, what is the benefit of having any plants done this early? Isn't this something that we could do down the road on our own, dig a few holes and throw some plants in, or what benefit?
Sure, so doing them now would be paid for through the project. And if we're gonna do this, I would recommend doing it now. They would be a landscape designer, even if it's at a lesser value, less number of plants, but they would know in terms of, you know, where to plant them, how far away to plant them, and it would be done in a nice design, I would say. And otherwise, it would come to the school committee for you to come up with the money at a future date to pay for any additional plants.
But where would the money come from if we decide to go the planting or the vinyl? Is that...
From the project, right?
Comes from the project?
Right, so through the chair. The School Building Committee is looking for a recommendation from the school committee, so based on that recommendation, they would then need to vote it next week.
Oh, no.
So much for going home.
You missed us already?
I missed this because I wasn't paying attention. Aren't your people done?
He was excited. Give him a break.
Another hour?
No, at least, 15 minutes.
You wish.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
Thank you.
Here, I actually have a question about that, though. To Gail's point, so just with the way that the project works, or is working, if it still comes out of the project, what do we lose by gaining $15,000 worth of plants? So, how does it directly impact what the kids would be getting? Because personally, I would rather my kids have carpet or...
Mm-hmm.
Whatever.
But you know, something to that, they know.
Yep, I agree.
That's my personal view of it.
Through the chair, there is contingency money that's available, so what I can state to you is, and this is assuming the School Building Committee approved it, it would not have any impact on, say, any part of the building, quite honestly, at all.
More supplies or anything like that?
No, correct, correct, it would not.
Either way, I would say I'm not in support of $15,000 worth of additional plantings.
No, I believe that. Even with the plantings, sorry, Joyce, even with the plantings I already got going up there, you're still gonna need $15,000 more.
Through the chair, that was in response to a question that the committee asked last time, was, could we ask for some bigger plants, and some more plants? So, that was a response that they had designed. I shared this morning, that seemed, when I first heard the number, I was surprised by it. I thought it seemed like an awful high number. I did say, well, I don't know what the committee would feel, but if they wanted to go that route, instead of the vinyl fence, or the vinyl, it's up to you, but if you wanted to stay with the chain-link, you could certainly, if you wanted some more mature plants or trees, you could say up to a value of X dollars, and they were designed based on that amount of money. So, you certainly could do that.
Chair, if they would not approach the vinyl or the $15,000?
And the benefit is, Dr. Brunel said, is that they would do the planting, where my idea to do the planting...
It costs you later.
Yeah, we're not looking for redwoods out there. No woods or anything.
The original chain-link, the amount of figure, was that 4,000?
I don't actually know the original chain-link. That's always been, through the chair, I'm sorry, always been designed as part of the project.
This was just all above and beyond this $10,000 that turned into $12,000.
No, $15,000.
$15,000.
Right.
How about, how about we cut it more than in half, and say $5,000 worth of plants to dress up the original chain-link fence? It's a savings of at least $5,000.
Five to $7,000, anyway.
That's what I was thinking.
And we could be selective with that $5,000, and I don't know who would do this, but take a look at it from a couple of different angles outside and say, you know what, we'd like to, looking from this direction, we'd like to see something there, maybe blocking that post, or maybe we'd like to see it blocking that corner of the building, or that window.
Like Mary Ellen said, though, if you give them a set price, they can balance it off.
Yeah.
Correct, that's their job, they can do that.
Right. Yeah, even if it was, even if it was them drawing up the visuals on a computer, I don't know, but they'd like to do it, but that would be something I would be comfortable with, considering where we came from, that's...
The way I look at it, plantings aren't wasted. Even if you check, if the fire towel goes away, and you decide to do something with that property, plantings can be moved.
Yes.
So, you don't lose them, whereas a vinyl fence, what are you doing with it?
Right.
You know, so I think maybe that's the way to go.
And I would say, even just from a maintenance standpoint, the vinyl fences need to be cleaned. They get pretty dusty, who knows what soot would do to them?
Yeah.
And also, if there was ever graffiti, it's always easy to go over chain-link fence. Yeah, so I would, if we're comfortable with that number, and that idea, I would entertain a motion.
Make that motion to approve the retention of the plant to keep the chain-link fence and the $5,000 of additional plantings.
Do I have a second?
You do.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, this is a vote. Thank you for that update.
Sure. The School Building Master Plan Team will not actually officially meet until May, but we actually are meeting a subset of us that are working on the construction, starting every Tuesday morning, so I'll provide you some updates regarding that. In terms of the School Building Reuse Disposition Advisory Group, I included in the packet for you a memo. It's my understanding there's been some discussions about perhaps moving the superintendent's office out of Randall, 5 West Street, and moving it to Town Hall. I wanted to share this with you before it is sent off to them, just to let them know that, A, we're content to remain here, certainly, but if there is a decision made, because they have some alternative use for this space, outlined, and again, assuming you were to approve of it, outlining what our needs would be in terms of space needs, storage needs, a school committee room that we would need to be able to present live meetings from, the professional development room, and as I noted on here, obviously, we would need ADA-compliant spaces, at least the school committee room, the superintendent's office. If an individual was to come in, we could certainly accommodate them, otherwise if needed. In storage areas, we have a requirement, state mandated records retention, to be sure that we maintain those. And then in the final paragraph, as we look, and I'll mention this shortly in the meeting, as we look to our preschool program and potentially expanding it, that if we are moved out of here, and if there is no need for this space, and I'm not aware of any that's been identified yet, we could certainly use this as a preschool center, should you ever choose to go in that direction. So, I just wanted to provide them with some information and some options of, or of what we would need.
Okay. Any comments?
So, who's gonna make the decision whether you're moving or not? Is it something you're part of, or do you feel more comfortable just staying here? What seems to be the catch-all?
So, just in terms of the School Reuse Committee, all we're deciding is on what we would recommend, based on an upcoming public hearing that we're going to hold, it's to be scheduled at this point, it may definitely be on May 4th. It's also being taken into consideration with what are the other needs of the other civic organizations in town? If the town could use that solely for Town Hall use, if it's going to be easier for citizens to come in and, you know, access the superintendent's office while they're at, excuse me, at Town Hall. In addition, it was raised to our attention that there may also be potential for the town to make money through using this building for other services, or to offer, as you proposed here, for an additional preschool. So, there are several different options in play. All of the, the committee will do is we'll take what we hear from towns, from all of the citizens in town, as well as people such as the housing authority, we'll make a recommendation, and at that point in the town, it's my understanding that they would need to actually have a vote, on whether they accept or... And then they have to go through the next step of getting bids, so I don't see this as taking place anytime soon, because either way, the buildings, once it changes in purpose, they would need to make ADA compliant, which is quite a lengthy process. So, it won't be handed down. There are several layers of people who have to approve and decide, so... And we actually have another meeting in two weeks, on Monday, so where we'll actually have the housing authority come and speak, which I feel is so...
Mr. Page?
I mean, just hearing about this and reading the letter, that it just seems like, with the Town Hall the way it is now, there's really not that much room in there. How would they, you know, there's a lot of looking into do to have this moved down to the town or up to the Town Hall. It just seems to be a little bit much.
Through the chair, I think what they're thinking is if they reused Mary D., so Mary D. would be an ex of the Town Hall, I think, is what they were thinking, yeah.
That's correct, so we're taking that into, like with who else at Town Hall, if work needs to be done at Town Hall, we need to shift the entire staff to Mary D. for a time, but at this point, we're just trying to continue to gather information about which party can what, what's best to use, based on zoning, parking.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Question. Question. I don't see the school department having to go to the Town Hall that often for business, or am I incorrect in that thinking? I mean, is it a monthly thing, or a couple of times a year, or?
Through the chair, we do, Mr. Barber does need to bring up, when we have collections for our satellite or galaxy or preschools, so there are turn-ins that need to happen for them. We do have a mail run that occurs three days a week, and we stop up at Town Hall to get mail, and we share it, you know, amongst each other, but there are terms that need to go there.
You don't particularly have to go there for meetings all the time.
Oh, no, no. And we have meetings regularly with the town's administration, and we generally bounce back and forth between locations. Yeah.
And through the chair, I think what the sentiment that we're getting from a lot of the parents in town is that it would be nice to have the superintendent's office close to Town Hall. Just should they need to do several different items of business for the day, and really just to feel a little bit more connected with the superintendent's office. But again, we're still gathering feedback.
It's early, early in the process, and who knows?
And now the parents will be coming out here because the new middle school, so it won't seem so far away.
They may come to us with something down the road that's favorable, and we might be excited to move, but as of now.
They may not.
They may not. As of now, we're comfortable, and we'll continue to take your suggestions.
And again, you know, that would also, just to further clarify, if there's anything in this building that isn't ADA compliant, that then further compounds trying to put together the pieces of the puzzle, not only for budget, but if this building would also change use, that's another layer of complexity that we would have to do and remember that we consider. So this is a while.
All kinds of thinking.
We'll let you guys take care of that.
All that being said, at least for the first part of the process, the community would like to have a suggest, basically have our component wrapped up by June first, just in terms of what we would suggest, and then the next of it.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that update. Can we now move on to new business?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shared with you in here, we've recently received notification that the warrant for the spring town meeting, not the March or April one, the May fifth, the annual town meeting, the warrant has opened and will close on Monday at four o'clock. So Mr. Barber has prepared, these are ones that we have, that we bring forward on an annual basis, the Medicaid one, the one regarding the high school gym and health recreation trust fund, and the third one, we'll need to confirm with Mr. Casanova, whether this will come forward at the annual town meeting or the fall special town meeting. It's come in the past, but we wanted to put it in here just as a discussion point. So it is our recommendation that you approve these warrant articles as presented.
Would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve these warrant articles as written here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote.
The next item is, I updated for you the school choice report. This was first presented and was, copy was provided in your packet back in 2010, when the school committee first accepted school choice at the middle school and high school. What you have before you hear is also updated information that includes last school year as well as the current school year to date. I looked at this as I have over the past few years in terms of attendance, discipline, participation in athletics and fine arts, as well as report card grades. And what you see, which mirrors what was seen back in 2010 originally, is that our school choice students are positive contributing members of our teams, both at the middle school and high school, whether it's attendance, discipline, grades, or participation, their rates mirror, or in some cases are slightly better than our entire population at those two respective schools. So you had previously voted to continue in the school choice program previously, but it is my recommendation, and we've had lots of discussions with Mr. Handfield and Mr. Gaggen, as well as Dr. Lozay, that based on this information, that you add five slots to Auburn Middle School and ten to Auburn High School. Based on our enrollment projections, there is ample space to address both of these.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion, that we add the recommended numbers that Dr. Brunel just said.
Five to our middle.
Five to our middle and ten to our high.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
No, it just seems, I went through this data at home, and the school choice students have, obviously, they want to be here, and it shows in their attendance and their behavior, and they're taking AP classes and everything about it.
They are.
They want to be here. They want to be, get a good education. They're here for the right reasons, I guess, is what I want to say.
Anything else?
The only thing I worry about is taking too many in and having a problem with overcrowding in our schools. And you're saying you're definitely comfortable with that issue.
I am. Through the chair, we conferred with the principals, and that is our goal. We certainly don't want to do anything ever to jeopardize the education of our Auburn students, and I'm very comfortable that this is not.
Okay, thank you. That was my biggest.
I would just say thank you for the thorough reports. Again, I think this may be my third time seeing these reports, and they're all favorable, very similar. And as you said, Gail, it seems like they're really making the grade, and so we're happy to have them and happy to continue this process as long as we continue to get good students. And as you said, Wayne, if things don't get overcrowded and we have the room for them, why not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
The next item, some pretty exciting news. We're very excited about it. As you may have seen, our cross-country teams oftentimes are running for the high school and middle school out and around in the streets and areas. As our move over here, we've looked at land that the water commissioners actually are responsible for, and they have given, I included in your packet here my original letter to them to actually make a true cross-country course. It would be out, there's actually trails out there now, oftentimes used by ATV, so some work would be required for them. But I just wanted to make you aware of this. We're in the early stages of it. I can tell you, though, that just today, I believe, or perhaps yesterday, we did receive written approval. They had given their verbal approval. So Mr. Barber looked into, in terms of liability, and through our current athletic insurance, the students, we would be covered by using that area there. We talked to construction meeting this morning and last week about some potential funding. I actually will be putting in a memo to the SBC to request that they approve a fence to prevent the students from going to an area out in the back over here. That's got a pretty substantial drop based on what had been there, a trolley before. So they're working up a price, and I will send that to the SBC for next week's meeting. It will require us going to conservation, but I think the potential, the cross-country coaches actually walked out there, both the middle school and high school, and are just so excited to think that our kids would not be running on Route twelve, you know, the streets and things, and actually have a legitimate course.
Yes.
So just with this, I guess we rated for competition as well, so that we could actually host other schools here for?
The length, sure, the length of it, there are minimum lengths and there are maximum lengths, and as noted in here, the length of it would allow for our students to run, in terms of formal competitions beyond just the middle school or high school using it, I can't be certain about that. I'd have to check and see. Only that I don't know what the regulations are, but I can tell you that the coaches were very excited at the potential of this. So if possible, we could certainly look to do things like that.
I think it's maybe that would bring out, out the, the links into all of this, for the sake of our businesses.
Absolutely.
No, I think this is a great idea, because if I was cringe, and I've seen the students going through Jerry Square and on Swanson Road with the traffic coming off of
Right.
two ninety, this would be great.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I mean, because there's always stragglers that are more by themselves.
Absolutely.
And this would be a much better place for them.
Right, right.
Harrington, did you have a question?
I just had a comment. Maybe we can use the vinyl fence money and put it towards this. I'd much rather send my friend here.
As Wayne just said, are we going to have another fence discussion?
Well, I'm passing this one.
Will we have to name the fence?
I'm kidding. I want it to be the Harrington Gateway.
I think that's right there. All right, we now move on to upcoming events.
I actually, just prior to sharing those, I did just want to provide you an update. There'll be a full report at the April first meeting, but as you know, as part of the strategic plan, expanding our preschool was a point that was discussed time and again, and you saw in the recent report. So a preschool study team has been meeting, and most recently, we are in the process of getting registrations for next year. And what we're finding is because our three-year-old students who are already in place move up as four-year-olds, it doesn't leave any spots for new four-year-olds who may not be in a preschool. So based on that information, there are at least twelve students who would be interested. So we will be coming back to you with a proposal to potentially expand our preschool. It's, it would be self-supporting, so there would not be any operating budget impact. It would be a tuition-based program. But also, at the same time, statewide as well as nationally, and I'm sure you've seen things, there's just great emphasis on early childhood education, and really promoting and getting children in, and supporting them in their very early years. So what we'd like to do is send out, much like what we did years ago with full-day kindergarten, to send out a non-binding survey to the parents of the four-year-olds to find out if we did offer a full-day class next year for four-year-olds, it would be by lottery, because we'd only have room for one, use it as a pilot, and then collect some data and see, is this the direction that we want to go in? So I wanted to make you aware, we're gonna send that survey out. It's non-binding us, but if we get back that no people are not interested in the full day for four-year-olds, we wouldn't even pursue it. My suspicion is, because we've heard anecdotally from families, it's challenging for some families to bring their child to and from preschool for two and a half hours a day. So we'd like to use this opportunity to gauge their interest, and we'll report to you at April first, but I wanted you to know where.
And where would the classroom be?
We're actually looking to possibly have it at the high school, right nearby, the two preschool classrooms that are there now. But there are some other opportu, for the pilot year. If it were to work, as I noted in here, if Randall was ever to be vacant, we could look to here. But in at least one of our other schools, Packer Chalk, for example, when Mary D. goes up there, there could be some spots there as well.
Now, do you use the high school students at all?
They do.
Preschools?
They do. They go down and they help out in those classrooms.
Nice opportunity for the students.
Great opportunity. And as part of the preschool study team, there were members of the group who went out and visited area preschool programs. And actually, Shrewsbury has a great model that they use, that they have a very formal, structured class, three classes that actually the students at Shrewsbury High take, and they go in and serve like as a practicum or internship in there. But the preschool teachers have reported, they have an awful lot of support from high school students, and it's a great, the kids, the preschool students love having them, the high school students love going in, so it's a great, great relationship.
Gives them a chance to see if that's something they want to pursue in college.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
Nice opportunity.
And then in terms of upcoming events, the sing-along, actually, this is music in the schools month, and Bryn Mawr has had their sing-along this evening. Mary D. has theirs tomorrow night. Number of events going on, field trips taking place, and the all-children's choir, taking nothing away from our upper-grade students is always really very enjoyable. It's on next Friday, actually, at six-thirty at the high school.
Just like to say that Mary D.'s is tonight.
Mary D.'s is tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
Bryn Mawr's is tomorrow.
I said it the wrong way. We were at a leadership team meeting. Mrs. Chase was going back for theirs tonight. Bryn Mawr's is tomorrow night. Thank you, yes.
Do not go to Mary D. tomorrow night.
No, that's right.
You'll be singing along.
And it is over at Mary D. right now, exactly. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, and that's it for new business, and we move on to business and financial. Mr. Barber, thanks for waiting patiently.
No problem. Always a pleasure. Through the chair, the first topic that we would like to talk about is transfers. You'll see two handouts. The first one is transfers for budgetary items that are within the same series, such as items for the We the People program, encumbrances for supplies, also some payroll encumbrances being transferred between similar serieses, as well as items for tuition. In addition to that, you'll see which does not need school committee approval, again, just for informational purposes. The second one in your file will be transfers that do need school committee approval. The first one is for twenty thousand dollars, which relates to funding building improvements for ten Swanson Road. The second one is to correct encumbrances that are relating to building improvements and equipment acquisitions for over other building schools, the Bryn Mawr and Packer Chalk.
I would entertain a motion. A motion that I don't see here.
I'll make the motion. Do you approve the transfer for guys, Mr. Barber?
You always do that.
Do I have a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote.
In addition to your packet, you'll see a document for the revolving accounts and special revenue funds. This is your monthly update that you can use to identify what we currently have in each of these respective accounts. Similar to the past couple of months, the only one that you'll see a credit balance is our school lunch account, and that's primarily because we deal with, obviously, revolving monies coming in to utilize the cost of operations for this school lunch program. And because at the beginning of the year, when we have our salaries respectively for all the staff, we have to encumber the entire salary amount, so we use that as our starting point, and then we work to reduce that or eliminate that deficit number that's there. Do you have any questions on revolving or other special revenues account?
I just have a question on the school lunch. I know you raised the price much first, did that. I assume that money has helped pay the bills. Has that affected students taking hot lunch in any way, or?
With some communications I've had with Ms. King, who's our food service director, actually, the counts for student sales have actually, they've actually increased slightly. There hasn't happened any reduction, and that's with the increase in the pricing, excuse me, that we had implemented for all three levels of schooling.
Okay. That's good, because they started sending the menus home at some point, so that probably helped too.
I think you're not to speak on behalf of the food service department, but I know that there's been a handful of initiatives as well that they're trying to do to implement to obviously appease the students that are coming into the picture for obviously having lunch within the school. That's with modifying the lunching, the menus, and, you know, to make them even a little bit more appealing. But with all those items that Mrs. King has been doing, it's obviously been a very positive perspective for the food service department.
That's good news.
Excellent. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I think they added little incentives, too. If you get hot lunches, like a little game.
Sticker day.
Sticker day, yes.
Oh, yeah. Stickers are very important.
My child still doesn't care, but whatever. I think it sounds fun.
Did you get your sticker?
Say it at your house.
I think being able to get students who, every student sees the food service department on a daily basis, so I think by doing some of these small little things to that interaction with individuals that they're already seeing normally, is also making it more, I guess it's an advertisement within an advertisement, by having something small that can kind of just attract the students. And sometimes if they know if they can pull a sticker off of a tray, and they find out that that's going to provide them something as simple as a thing of milk, now that makes it more attractive for the students to feel like they want to be involved with it as well, and that's turning around to obviously having them buy lunch. And by doing that, they're actually having something that's very nutritious, that's really meeting all of the food spectrums for what they need to absorb in their system, so.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
And in addition, you'll also find in your packet our current year-to-date budget report, which gives you an update as far as all of the operational costs, what we've had from a budgetary plan, what we already spent, as well as what we've encumbered year-to-date for any of the operational costs that we need from the school budget. Any questions?
Same none.
Please go ahead.
That first, Mr. Barber? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we... Thank you. And we do need to go into executive session.
Briefly, yes.
I would entertain a motion.
I make the motion to enter executive session per Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations with union personnel and non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second, I'll motion.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutton?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes, there's a vote. Good night, everyone.